In tenth, uh, twenty twenty-five at six thirty-five. Kaylee.
Councilwoman Knight.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Grant.
Here.
Councilwoman Berth, Stafford, I believe she just stepped away from.
She just walked away.
But she is here. Um, Councilwoman Richardson.
Here.
Councilwoman Darn.
Here.
Mayor Marks.
Here. And the invocation, uh, is Mac, Mac Vindome from Advent Health Chaplain. Please rise for the prayer and pledge allegiance.
Yes. Welcome home, everybody. We're back in action. Let us pray. Father God, as we take a moment this evening to pause, standing in this building that stands out as a reminder that we too will face the storms of life. But as your daughter once said, every storm runs out of rain. And so, Lord, help us to remember in the world, in a world where it feels as if everything is being torn down, help us to build. In a world where it feels as if people are saying, burn and burn and burn, help us in Orange City to build and build and build. Help us to be bridge builders. Help us, dear Lord, to continue to be a light. And help us to always remember that the darkness only wins if the light ceases to be the light. Continue to shine in Orange City. Continue to shine in our hearts. In Jesus' name I pray, and all of God's children said, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mac. Okay, number one, absences. Uh, one A, shall the absence of Councilmember Lisa Stafford from the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five Regular City Council Meeting be excused? Here she comes. Did you want to comment on that? Did you hear what I s- want you to repeat it?
I heard you.
Okay. Any comment on your absence?
Oh, I had a great time at my grandson's graduation.
Okay. We just need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Lisa Stafford from the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five Regular City Council Meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Kaylee.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stafford.
Yes.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Knight.
Yes.
Mayor Marks.
Yes, and the motion passes, uh, to excuse the absence of Councilmember Stafford. Number two, presentations and proclamations. Two A, we have Planning Commissioner Wesley Kilmeier, years of service proclamation. I have a proclamation I'd like to read, um, and then we will do some pictures with the family. Whereas Wesley Kilmeier served on the Planning Commission of the City of Orange City from October twenty-third, two thousand eighteen until May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, demonstrating unwavering commitment and professionalism. And whereas throughout the tenure on the Planning Commission, Wesley played a pivotal role in shaping the future of Orange City. And whereas Wesley committed his life to public service, he has built many homes for Habitat for Humanity, served on the Friends of the Library Board, volunteered for the Friends of the Library, and served as the President of the Sherwood Oaks Homeowners Association. And whereas Wesley has made a lasting impact on colleagues, friends, and the community embodying the values of service and dedication. And whereas Wesley's legacy of hard work, perseverance, expertise, has set a high standard for future generations. Now therefore, I, Kelly Marks, Mayor of the City of Orange City, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize and honor Wesley Kilmeier for over seven years of outstanding service to the Planning Commission and commend him for his lifelong contributions to our community. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Orange City to be affixed on the tenth day of June, twenty twenty-five. Kelly Marks, Mayor. By the City Council. Okay, moving on to two B, the Admin Budget Presentation. Dale Arrington.
Would you like me to go to the podium or? So, um, Kayla, can you pull up? Thank you. Presentation for me and operate the clicker. It is, um, my pleasure to present to you really two distinct budgets. One of them is Administration and the other is called General Government. Administration also goes by the name of City Manager's Office. And, thank you, you can keep on going. And there's not too much to this budget. Most, all of it is in personnel. And that is because the office provides general services to the, all the other departments in city government. We act as the, um, Chief Executive Officer, and that would be myself and Christine Davis, the Assistant City Manager. Uh, we also provide the IT services to all of city government. And I would like to point out that those are twenty-four hour a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year that our two IT people are on call. We have an IT Director and then an IT Generalist that can, and they both interchangeably can work on hardware and software. Uh, but each one of them has their specialties. And, um, they even, on occasions, have been known to make house calls. So, you know, great job for those guys. Uh, we also have one HR Director position, and that is also our Risk Management. That position is currently vacant. It was formerly occupied by Jeremy Wiggins. We are actively recruiting and beginning the interview process. And we have an HR Generalist, and Danielle is in the office, or in the, um, au- audience. And, uh, for many of you, that is the first time that you have seen her and have met her. And she's holding down the fort in Jeremy's absence and doing a great job. We also have one PIO. The job title is PIO, but she does many, many things, including organizing and taking care of many of the administrative tasks that are associated with putting on any of our events. And we have one Executive Assistant. Her name's Maddie McAllister. I think everyone knows Maddie. You can't, she's very effervescent. Um, and then Elisa Millwater, who is all of ours Executive Assistant and keeps us organized. So that's where most of our, our funding goes to. We have, um, an operating budget that is, uh, pretty lean and mean. This year, we have put in a request for seventy-six thousand dollars. And that includes, um, all of the items needed to operate our department, but it is much more than pens and papers. It includes all of our travel and training and League of City dinner money. All of our employee engagement functions, um, are in that, as well as, uh, luncheons and awards and publications and subscriptions that, um, more than just our office uses. It would be associated with the Personnel Department and the training that they do. So this year, we have also put in a capital request. And I'll explain more about this when we get to the General Government Budget. Our portion of the, you know, annual computer replacements. They have a life of approximately five years. Every once in a while, we can get one to last a little bit longer, because remember, we're using those computers all the time, every day. Um, is three thousand and eighty dollars for one computer replacement. And that is the sum total of our budget as, uh, we submitted it to the Finance Department. The other budget I have is General Government. And this is quite the opposite of the first budget. As you can see, there are no personnel in this budget. Instead, it is the budget holding area where we perform citywide services to all of our departments and manage, uh, some of our contracts that benefit every department out of. The first item I would like to point out is, you know, last year, we did have some money in personal services. And that is because we used it as a reserve for, uh, new positions that we were bringing in. And that was, we had, um, authorized some half-year positions and had to park some money here for a temporary period of time. We are not proposing to do that again this year. So you see no money in personnel services. Instead, what you see is all of our money, um, in our, uh, operating expenses. And normally, I like to compare adopted budget to requested budget. And the amended budget is what happens as you move into the fiscal year. And we had some contracts that were open that we needed to carry forward. And that is why you see the bump up of nearly two hundred thousand dollars, um, in the amended category. But, you know, for your purposes, you need to be looking at adopted versus requested and, uh, and the amended. So all three categories are there for you to consider. So this year, if you go to the next slide, there are some areas where we are expecting quite a bit of increase in, um, to happen. One of those is liability insurance, and this is a statewide trend. Are, the increase is forty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. The actual amount that we have and are still under negotiations with is almost three hundred thousand dollars. I am asking for additional, uh, study money to do a compensation study. This would be for all general fund and non-union personnel. So as you, some of you may remember, we went through this approximately three years ago. We should have done it, started our study this year, uh, but we didn't have the money in our budget. And the further you wait to do a complete comparison of all your class, employee classifications to the market, the further you get out of whack with what the market is really dictating. Some positions, it's always been my experience, have gone up a little. Some positions have gone up a lot, and every once in a while, you find you don't need a position. You know, you've got them titled wrong and they're doing a completely different job function than you've hired them in. You bring someone in to analyze this, um, so that you've got a good, um, third-party view of the adjustments that you need. I would like to be able to start this in October one so that we have it ready to go for you next year when you're considering the budget and know what we are dealing with. We think it will be about forty thousand dollars, and we are working on the, um, scope of services right now. You can see that we are also going to have an increase in property insurance. That goes up to a hundred and seventy thousand. You can just see the increase. That's still under negotiation. And it is kind of an anomaly, um, that you see the, uh, City Hall Annex and the Property Tax Annex as new items. They are not really new items. It's just that prior to this year, we had the Utilities Department in that building. And these were shown as being in your utilities account. Now they are coming into the General Fund Budget as we get ready to make the interior, um, improvements that are needed to City Hall. We will be moving one floor at a time. Maybe, 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 you know, we'll be shifting personnel and, and we will be occupying the Annex. So while we do the work in City Hall. Yes, ma'am.
Fifty-nine percent increase? That's insane.
It's because it was split between, um, this fund, the General Fund, and the Utility Fund.
Oh, okay.
Now then, you're seeing the increase in the General Fund Budget because utilities no longer chipping in. Then we see an increase in Attorney Services and an increase in software due to new programs that we purchased that have an annual upkeep each year. Uh, the Attorney Services are also costed out in different funds. That's not the total budget. I want to make sure you understand that. Some of it is charged to the different funds that are enterprise funds. The major capital request that I have in front of you is the replacement of the citywide phone system. The charge to the General Fund is seventy-three thousand dollars. There is another, um, twenty-seven thousand dollars that will be charged to the, uh, Utility Fund. And we are having to replace our phone system, not only because of its age, but because the maker of it has declared bankruptcy, even though we tried real hard to get all our bits and pieces off the, um, Internet. They're becoming increasingly more difficult to find, and our system is unsupported at this juncture. We're starting to get more flipped in our phone system. And yes, everybody still uses their landlines. I, I can't imagine running a city without the landlines, so. Um, I previously mentioned, uh, the computer system replacement. That is done throughout everybody's department and charged back, so. So that's about it for those two areas of the budget. If you have any questions, I'm happy to attempt to address them.
Any questions from the council?
Just, um, who is our current phone?
Is it Cisco? No, no, it's not. I'm drawing a blank on our phone. Mitel, Mitel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It comes up out on my screen every day. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. No further questions, we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to go to two C, uh, City Council and City Clerk Budget Presentation. Kaylee Burleson, City Clerk.
Alright, so I'm Kaylee Burleson. I'm the City Clerk. Um, good evening, Council. I know I've already greeted you tonight. We'll do that again. Alright, so we will start with the City Council's budget tonight. There is a decrease in your Personal Services, and this is due to an FRS rate change for elected officials. Um, the FRS contribution for elected officials has decreased from fifty-eight point six eight percent to fifty-four point five seven percent. There was a significant increase in operating expenses, and this is primarily due to increase in cost of operating, for one. Um, but also a increase in travel per diem rates, um, the amount of special events and training that the council is attending. And then the grants and aids was where the sponsorship funds were. So there is a decrease of twenty-eight thousand five hundred. We still requested the fifteen hundred, and that is the only monetary sponsorship, um, and that is going to the School of Government Program. So there, was that? Next slide. We do have some constraints here as far as the training and travel increases go. So Legislative Action Days, we're requesting an increase of ten thousand dollars. Mayor Marks did attend Legislative Action Days, and she, she did voice a concern of needing more advocates from Orange City in Tallahassee to not only represent Orange City funding requests, but also municipalities as a home and protecting home rule powers and everything. So I don't think we ever decided on the exact number. I think we were kind of going for maybe four attendees, possibly. And that price, the hotel prices up there are pretty expensive during that time. Um, and then the cost of travel and, you know, meals and parking and back and forth from hotel to the Capitol and whatnot. The other travel and training increase, um, we're just having, council seems to be attending numerous, more events than, than previous years. I feel like there are also more events happening than previous years too. Um, but that also includes like per diem costs, like reimbursement for mileage, um, for meetings and whatnot. Um, but we did have to significantly raise that. We are, you know, kind of tight right now. And then, of course, we have four thousand dollars added for the Citizens Academy as well. Um, that's a new program that you all approved, that we just actually finished up the first Citizens Academy. Um, but that is just funding for next year in case council chooses to move forward with that program again. And that's really all for yours. Are there any questions on the City Council budget?
Four thousand dollars for Citizens Academy. What do we buy with that?
Uh, tchotchkes at the very beginning, which, you know, were barely sufficient this year. And all the food for seven evenings, uh, coursework. And this is based on an anticipated attendance of twenty people.
Thank you.
So you're looking at a hundred and forty meals, basically. Um, and, you know, twenty gift, gift bags. And the operating supply through, throughout there in case we need to finish anything else along the way. There are plaques.
Shirts.
It all adds.
It adds up quick.
Plaque shirts, it gets expensive.
I would say that food amounts to probably half of that, four thousand dollars, um, to be honest. That usually runs around two fifty to three hundred, based on the amount of attendees.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Now we will move on to the City Clerk budget. I also have an increase in my Personnel Services. Um, that is a placeholder for health benefits, dental, FRS, while we await the final cost figures on that. There was also an increase in the operating expenses. We are going through quite a bit of paper. Um, hopefully that will slow down a little bit since we're back in our chamber. Um, but the cost of everything has significantly gone up as far as supplies goes, so we wanted to make sure that we did have significant supplies in our office. It is also including our Just Voia program, the new Public Records, um, software that council approved at the end of twenty twenty-four. That program has been amazing for us so far. We went live with it in March, and I believe we are almost at eight hundred Public Records requests since March. It has significantly helped the process. It helps us keep it very, very organized. And it's very, very easy to track who has a Public Records request, where they're adding it. So we greatly appreciate that software, but that increase is due to the yearly cost of it. That is sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars of it. And then we also requested an increase of fifteen thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, and that is for travel and per diem. A lot of the conferences that we attend, um, are business tax receipt related, because my office does handle business tax receipts. City Clerk's conferences, um, and there is also a Records Management Conference that we would like to start attending. Hotels are kind of going up in price. They add resort fees now. Um, a lot of these conferences are down south where the per diem rates are higher, um, unfortunately. But that is where that increases. And then, oh. I have one capital request, and that is for a computer workstation for the City Clerk. That is based on our IT rotating upgrade schedule, um, and that is twenty-eight hundred eighty dollars. That's all I had. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I've got a quick question with regard to travel and, um, the accommodations. These are all within the GSA rate standards is what you're looking for when you look for accommodations? They stay within that guideline?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, um, so all of, um, our organizations, so Florida Records Management Association, Florida Association of City Clerks, and then there is, um, Florida Association of Business Tax Officials. Um, they all do the hotel blocks with the government rates. Um, so yes, we book under those accommodations. Like I said, unfortunately, a lot of their conferences are down south. And the rates are just higher, unfortunately.
And sometimes you don't even get those blocks because they're full, and then you have to go somewhere else and pay full, right?
Yes, um, I find that with our conferences, I feel like they block a little more dates out than maybe some other organizations, unfortunately. But yes, it does happen where you have to go to another hotel for accommodations, and we try to find something within that guy, you know, that guideline. The Clerk's conferences, there are two of those a year. Business Tax Receipt is just one conference a year. Florida Records Management is also just one conference a year. Dale and I kind of talked out of schedule. So I don't believe that Rebecca and I will be attending both Clerk's conferences or anything this coming fiscal year. We're definitely trying to work out a schedule to where everybody gets the training that they need and get it on a rotating schedule to where it's not as heavy in the budget. and get it on a rotating schedule to where it's not as heavy in the budget. But the business tax receipt, records management, and city clerk training is very important to my office, so...
So you had talked about, um, the per diem for the council and how it's gone up. And we were talking about maybe four people for the League of Cities. Um, because when I went last time, I really could have used more of y'all there. It was just, we, because we were going for three million dollars. So I thought it would look better if there was more of us there to represent Orange City. And, um, so that's why we had that conversation. But being there, I think that if we're not asking for money, you know, this year coming up, then maybe we don't need to send that many people. You know, it depends on what we need, what our needs are. If we need something from, you know, the legislators, then I'd say, yes, let's go in full force. If we don't, we might want to save some money that way.
We will budget for it, and then...
Just in case. Yeah.
Then it'll return.
Right.
And, you know, I know that other cities have more people there, but I do want you to know that the land had so many people there.
Mm-hmm.
Because Mike Ribose was the president of the Florida City Managers Association. And his boss, Michael Poyce, is a past president. And so they will always be there, and as representatives in the Florida City Managers Association.
Okay, well, there was many cities there with multiples of commission, council, managers, you know. And let's face it, a lot of the cities in Volusia were, or in Florida, were going for money this year. So everybody had their hands out. So it just looks better when we got more than one person walking in there and going, can I have three million dollars, please? You know?
One of the items I do want to point out is, you know, K- K- FRS, right? We do not have a state budget. They have provided us FRS rates for using them, if not yet been adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What is the per diem cap for meals?
I can't remember what it is. It's twenty-three dollars for a dinner. That I know is our cap.
Seventeen for lunch and...
Thirteen for breakfast, I thought that.
Eleven or thirteen for breakfast, which...
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
And depending on where you go in the state, it fluctuates. There is a list, um...
But the fixed rates are the thirteen, fifteen, twenty-three. Bet if you, you were buying breakfast dinners for thirteen dollars, you'd get one.
Just saying.
I can vouch for that.
It typically changes in the areas that are like, the cost of living goes up. Um, so like Tallahassee is definitely one of those areas. Um, Boca Raton was definitely one of those areas, Miami. Um, where the cost of, you know, a regular meal that you would get here is almost double the price, basically. So it, the IRS accounts for that. So, but it's just honestly, we look at it based on where you're traveling to, to determine those rates. But yes, they were correct on the base rate.
And just to be transparent, when we go to these things, um, you give us a per diem for certain meals, but some of our meals are included in the price of what we're attending. So it doesn't cover all the meals there, it only covers what our event does not cover.
Correct, so like your Florida League of Cities conferences or, um, the IEMO, if the meal is provided, yes.
Yeah, it's not filet mignon or anything.
Yeah. We would not include the per diem for that meal, um, and we take that all into a consideration and look at the agenda for the program prior to, and we create the travel and per diem cost based on that. So unfortunately, hotels, uh, the cost of everything's just gone up, unfortunately. So that includes all the hotel rates and everything as well.
Okay, anything else from the council? Good?
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to two D, finance budget presentation, Devlin Moore.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Devlin Moore, finance director, mine will be short and sweet. As soon as it comes up, there we go. All right, so, uh, the finance department is made up of two cost centers or budgets, one being finance, which is funded out of the general fund, and the other being utility billing, which is funded out of the utility revenue fund. Does this work? This does not work?
Is it on? Should be on the side.
That's okay. Oh, there we go. Cool. All right, so the finance department. The finance department is made up of seven individuals, and, uh, like, uh, the city manager's office and the, uh, city clerk's office, the personnel budget is reflecting an increase primarily due to the, um, benefits that we're waiting on, uh, final negotiations. Our operating expenses, uh, for the requested, uh, fiscal year has slightly decreased, and this is due to, uh, primarily an biannual report that we have to do, uh, to meet reporting requirements. We don't have to do it next fiscal year, so we were able to take that out. Utility billing, and that's it for the finance department. Utility billing and analytics, as I said, that is funded by the utilities revenue fund. And in the operating expenses, we do have a slight increase of about fifty-five hundred dollars that is attributed to an increase in postage. Postage is going to be going up, I believe, in July and then again in January. Uh, so that postage is used for the utility bills that go out monthly, and also an increase in our utility billing software. Finance department's, uh, department does have one ad, or request for an ad. It is for a new customer support specialist position. And this would be funded by the utility revenue fund, not the general fund. As you can see, the, um, utility billing department is made up of a small team of three very hardworking individuals, one utility billing supervisor and two customer service specialists. The intent is to insert between utility billing supervisor and a customer service specialist, a support specialist to help support those departments, or those individuals. The utility billing, uh, staff currently provides customer service to almost forty-seven hundred customers now. We are growing that number, it's probably increased by almost a thousand since I've been here, uh, and I've been here about a decade. The, uh, three individuals support on a daily basis, uh, eleven or more field employees, uh, to support the public services department, and we currently analyze and monitor almost six thousand smart meters. The idea is that this position would provide redundancy and additional training. And believe it or not, this is a hard... You, the customer service position in utility billing is a very difficult position to fill. Um, it is both technical, because they have to be able to analyze meter data and use a computer and use the billing software, but we also want somebody who provides good customer service. And we're finding it to be more and more difficult. So to have this position in case, uh, we have turnover, somebody decides to leave the city, we'd be able to pull that person down and continue to provide the customer service that the, the city wants to, uh, always offer its customers. And it also gives the utility billing supervisor an opportunity to be more proactive with the analytical component, and that supports the public services department, the law's team in, uh, reporting issues with the utility meters, providing notifications to customers if there's leak detections, that, uh, kind of activity. Um, and then also to be proactive in always looking at and updating our standard operating procedures. We do have two, uh, computer replacements. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to two E, development services budget presentation, Joe Ruiz.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Uh, thank you for the time today. Um, I will be presenting, as mayor mentioned, Joe Ruiz, deputy director of development services, presenting to you all the presentation for the development services budget. So when we look at the development services department, we're broken up into two divisions. It is the planning and zoning division as well as the building division. So, um, you may see faces on this, uh, on this page here. Uh, so our department is going through some transitional, uh, transitional season that many may know about already. Uh, so, um, here we've got the list of current employees, which is myself, the deputy director. Um, and I have been blessed to be able to move up, um, once Becky retires, right, at the end of this month. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity, and I hope, hope to set the, uh, meet the bar that's set, which is really high. So it's gonna be tough shoes to fill. Uh, currently, our senior planner, which is National Merced, our current planner one, which is Renee Deaton. Emily Teodoro, her, her last day was last Friday, um, she's no longer with the city. But we have hired our new executive assistant, uh, who starts on six twenty-three. Um, as Devlin was mentioning, the customer service rep, she actually was a customer service rep for the utility department before, and so she's gonna be rejoining us in the city here as the executive assistant in development services. So we're happy to see a familiar face despite many faces that are leaving our department. Um, and then you have Becky Mendez here at the end. Um, so Becky is not presenting today, but there was a touch of, of hers in this presentation, and you will see this, uh, with the X's. So I was hoping to have the Family Feud buzzer come up when that, when those X's came up, but that was, that was a lot of work, could not make that happen. So yes, three left, uh, one joining, and then we are currently working at filling the, uh, de- the deputy director position, which is my current position. Uh, so looking at the changes in the budget, uh, so as Devlin mentioned and the other department budgets mentioned, uh, there will be an increase due to pending, uh, benefit determinations. So that's where you see that three thousand eight hundred thirty-seven increase. And then there, um, is an increase in operating expenses. Uh, if you look through our budget, um, our budget's fairly simple, it's one of the, one of the simplest budgets. Um, we, uh, we in finance usually try to duke it out to see who has the most simple budget. And, uh, really what you're gonna see in our budget is, uh, our GIS software costs have, have gone up, uh, to maintain that. GIS mapping software is necessary, um, as, as we do need maps to do our jobs. And everybody likes pretty pictures, right, having those pretty pictures. Uh, so that has gone web-based, and that ma- those maintenance costs have increased for small governments. Uh, the other increase, which you're gonna see on this page here, which is historic district freestanding signs, um, and in the budget has been included or proposed ten thousand dollars. So when the new historic preservation board this year came together and they were working on establishing their goals uh, for the upcoming year or two-year, um, view, horizon, essentially, they asked staff if we can include, um, a study or, or design um, to look into historic freestanding signs, which would be signage at the entrances of the historic areas. So essentially, the north, south, and east entrances coming from graves, uh, coming along San Fernando in the north as well as on the south side. So, um, just for you all to consider, that's what that, um, allocation request in there is. Um, another request, uh, that we have in this year's budget, um, is a planning technician, um, additional, uh, position. So in twenty twenty-three, uh, Becky Wisely, uh, reclassified the executive assistant position to a planet, planning technician. So Alisa went on to greater things to work directly with our city manager. Um, so we lost Alisa, and essentially, the thinking was, let's create a planning technician position, which is, was classified equally with the executive assistant, but it's more catered to the planning side, uh, which can assist with, uh, building permits, um, planning determinations, zoning verification letters, business tax receipts, things like that. In doing that, we hired, the city hired Emily. Um, Emily did a great job, except it also revealed to us that although it was a great, uh, way to be able to move people up the chain, right, to have those planner types and encourage people to stay and have longevity and organic development, um, it really revealed to us the need for administrative duties in our department, right, which is why we've gone back and reclassified that back to an executive assistant. Um, 'cause in, in Emily, trying to, um, help out with the building permits and trying to help out with the business tax receipts, zoning verification letters, uh, inquiries on zoning and planning, um, it became very difficult in trying to process applications and trying to process, uh, requisitions for work orders, um, especially the fact that, uh, we do have a third-party consultant, uh, who does our engineering review and planning. And so there's accounts that we've gotta make whole and make sure that those are being maintained. So I really review that administrative workload, uh, required from the department. Uh, so, um, this year, um, we are asking for that planning technician, because in, what it did do was it provided needed assistance to our planner one position directly. Our planner one, uh, Renee, currently reviews pretty much all of the building permits that come in, uh, for both residential and commercial. Uh, we know that the man is, continues to grow, development continues to happen. Um, we have certain, uh, developments on the horizon that are coming. Um, and so we're just trying to, um, plan for that, that growth in the city. Uh, one of the things to help with was expedited review and over-the-counter permits that, uh, many people, they submit a fence permit and they want it instantly. They submit a roof permit on a historic property and they want those instantly, right? And so there does require some planning determination to make sure certain things are in the up and up and meet our code. Uh, so fences, sheds, roofs, driveways, BTR zoning reviews, things like that. Um, also, that position, we are anticipating we'll be able to provide internal mapping services. We currently try to handle as much mapping services as we can internally between myself and Renee. Uh, whenever we need help, we contact Public Works and reach out to Carleen. But that'll be a position that can kind of relieve staff on making those maps that you all see within our staff reports and things like that. And then lastly, as I mentioned, it really does allow for growth opportunity within the department for someone to start, as I did, uh, from the bottom as a technician and move up, um, right, one day to a director. Um, also, as has been mentioned, uh, one of our stations has reached a shelf life, so that'll be the computers workstation replacement. And that's essentially it for planning. Any questions on planning?
Any questions from the council?
Um, yeah, it said three hundred dollars for setup, uh, I forget what it was, uh, setup costs. What exactly does that entail?
So the setup cost really is just a phone. Uh, we currently have a station with a, with a laptop, and so that would just be giving them a phone. Yes, yes.
Well, that's on that position.
Yes.
In some instances, your setup costs would include a new desk, a new computer, you know, additional items, it all varies depending...
Yes.
It's connected to the computer system.
I have a question, is our permitting, um, online yet?
Uh, we are currently working on, um, an online, um, service currently right now as we speak. We had a meeting yesterday with our new building official, and so he's been working on some things to allow certain, do a test run to allow certain permits, and then hopefully to launch fully.
That would be great, because I've gotten some feedback from the residents that if they bring in their insurance and things like that, and then, you know, a week later, they, a contractor gets another job, they gotta come back and bring all the same stuff back in, and it'd be nice to be online, like Volusia County, so...
Certainly, and we got people that come from out of town.
That way, you were saying, people want permits done now.
Yep.
They just want them done recent, not like forever, so...
Right, right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, anybody else? Good?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with the building department, um, as you can see, personal services, that's actually anticipated to go down. Um, as you know, we do have a third-party, um, consultant or a, a firm, PDCS, that does provide us building services. With the operating expenses, uh, some of that's going up, um, some, some of the cost of everything is Kay- Haley, or Kaylee mentioned, um, has been increasing, and, uh, there is some workstations that you're gonna see as well that need to be replaced. Uh, so on the list of staff that's in the building department, uh, we had building official Glenn Perino, who has moved on to, uh, Winter Springs. Um, he served us for many great years, a great person, um, and he's working diligently over there. So, um, he is no longer here, he does have an ex over himself as well. And so now we have our new building official, Rick Platt. And so Rick Platt has been, uh, since the end of April, beginning of May, uh, with us, working with us. We have our permit clerk, Laura Lynn Cox, um, as well as Darlene Tally. And then we also have our building inspectors, Dawn Green and John Williams.
This is so weird. I just met Dawn.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I just had my roof replaced last Thursday, and she came, uh, what's today, yesterday. And I'm going, wait, why does she look familiar?
Hey, you probably saw her last year's presentation.
She's coming again tomorrow.
Okay, awesome. And I was, I, I meant to mention, you may have seen them obviously in doing inspections out in the field as well as maybe in your own properties. Uh, so with the capital request, um, as, uh, the workstations need to be replaced as well as the phone system replacement, which is in the seven thousand and forty dollar range. And that is it for building.
So I have a question about the computers. Is that, is that like a governmental thing that every five years you must replace them? Because I've had the same computer for like ten years. That's a lot of money to be replacing all them.
Well, I, you're very fortunate to have your, your same computer. So we do have a schedule. So we do have a schedule. Some of our computers, particularly if they're mobile computers, don't even make it that long. Uh, some of them last a little longer, so we put in the budget what we need and we do our best guess. And then we, um, at the beginning of the year, go through and make an assessment. And we don't necessarily replace one that is still working. We continue to use it. So.
'Cause I know the school board does that too. That's why I ask, the school board does that, and then they, they take them all to surplus, whatever.
Well, we do surplus what we can. Um, by the time they hit our surplus, um, they're, they're shot.
Okay, thank you.
But, but yes, we do have a regular rotation policy, and we budget for it every year. 'Cause what we don't wanna have happen is, oh, so-and-so can't work today 'cause their computer's broken. So.
Makes sense. Anything from the council? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, three citizens' comments. Um, I'm gonna call you up in the order that you asked. I just asked that you have three minutes on the clock. Um, we have a lot to cover, so if there's anything after that, we would have to talk to you at another time. It depends on what the subject is. Um, if it's anything, uh, quasi-judicial, do you wanna touch on that now? 'Cause I see
Sure, Mayor. I'm not sure exactly what, um, public comments or citizen comments that you have received. I, I will say to the council that if some of the, the comments that you hear this evening have to do with, uh, potential future, uh, quasi-judicial matters that will be coming before you, then if, if that happens, uh, and we'll see, then I will be interjecting at that time to remind everyone that because of the state laws that apply to the procedure for quasi-judicial matters of this council and other local government bodies, um, it is e- essential to, um, remember that, uh, we are only able to make our decisions on quasi-judicial matters on those, uh, on that evidence, that testimony, those documents that are actually received during that quasi-judicial hearing. As we do not have any on our agenda this evening, if there are comments that, that citizens may be coming forward this evening on a potential future quasi-judicial matter, I will be advising you that it would be inappropriate for you this evening to consider those. Again, you're, if, if something, uh, comes before you in the future, in this type of hearing, you are to make your decision at that time solely upon the information that you receive at that public hearing. And this is not an Orange City rule, as I've explained to all of you before. This is a state, state law set forth by the Florida court system so that all parties that are of interest in that future, uh, hearing and outcome will know that your decisions made that evening are based upon what everybody has heard and everybody has seen, and there are no, what are, what, there, there will be no consideration of what's called ex parte or one-sided communications. And that's just to make sure that the playing field is even and safe for all parties.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna call up the first one. Um, Rose Torres, if you can come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rose Torres. Thank you so much for seeing us. Um, my, uh, I'm a twenty-year resident of Orange City Estates, and we're here because we wanna oppose to the Orlando ER that's coming to Orange City to enterprise. Um, Orange City is, uh, is, Orange City Estates is a long-established neighborhood, peaceful hidden gem tucked away from the city's congestion, and the proposed ER threatens our community safety, our tranquility, and our future. While concerns like bright lights, noise, loss of trees, environmental diminished property values are valid, we're also concerned about the safety of our citizens, you know, our neighborhood, and also the city of Orange City. Um, that's the greatest worry, really. Uh, some of the safety risk, children in danger, there's a cr- a school across the street, it's called Sunrise Academy, and, um, they're directly across from the proposed ER, and then students already struggle with the traffic safety. So increased vehicle congestion is just gonna make it worse. Other concerns, pedestrian hazards. Our neighborhood, Orange City Estate, does not have any streetlights or sidewalks. So right now, anybody who's walking their dogs or exercising is just gonna have added risk with the additional ER traffic. Um, we also have children who bike, skateboard, they walk to the bus every morning, and again, no sidewalks, no streetlights. Sometimes they're in the dark, and that's just additional danger for them. Other unintended consequences that we believe would be, um, drug-seeking individuals. So with emergency rooms, while necessary, they often attract crime and disruption. So with opioid crisis, um, those ERs become hotspots for people who are looking for, to gain access to medications, and so that's just gonna increase theft and violence to our neighborhood. Um, there's also escalated incidents, for example, frustration with long wait lines in an ER, medical care, um, that's just gonna bring heated confrontations. And so we don't wanna bring that kind of criminal activity to the area. Um, there's also homeless encampments. So past events right there on that site where the ER is gonna be built, um, it, it, there's evidence that there's been homeless, uh, camps right there. So this is just gonna make it worse. And we, I don't know if you all know, there's also, um, problems with the site, was, which is right near Office Depot off of Saxon Boulevard. There's also a lot of homeless encampments in that area. So that's just gonna make it worse. Um, so we are basically just urging the officials to look into all of this, reconsider the project. Um, let's come up with a lot of solutions that benefit not just our neighborhood, but the whole city. Um, we just wanna preserve our neighborhood, our safety, our integrity, and realize that this is gonna impact the whole city. So we thank you so much.
So, Mayor, Council, and, and I guess I'm speaking also to members of, of the audience. Um, that presentation, um, was what I wasn't potentially expecting. And I wanna reiterate to the members of the audience who may want to also speak tonight on that subject, that this council is legally, uh, not allowed to consider tonight the information that you're providing. Tonight's not really the night to do it. And let me, let me give you an example. Let's say that you weren't here tonight, all of you in the audience that, that for whatever reason have opinions and want those opinions be heard by the city council. You're not here tonight. But the developers or the people that want to move forward with this, let's say they were here tonight, and they came up and they gave this council all the reasons why they think this is a great idea, and that these folks should vote if they, if it ever comes to them, and I don't know that it will, but if it eventually comes to them, and the, and the developer was here, you wouldn't be happy. You would be upset if this council was hearing all of that from the other side. And the Florida law recognizes that it's important, just like in a trial, that everybody says to the judge, and that's what these folks are gonna be sitting as potentially, it's called quasi-judicial. Both sides want to make sure that they're there when the other side says something, or asserts something, or alleges something. So my job is to protect the process and to make sure that the comments that you have, that you want to give tonight, respecting that, need to be made at the appropriate procedural time. Tonight's not it. So I know you're here, I know you wanna speak, but I'm telling these folks, they shouldn't consider it tonight. Because it's not, it's not allowed by the law, by Florida law from the process standpoint. So I can't stop you from speaking, but I'm gonna, every time someone comes up, I'm gonna say it again, and you'll get tired of hearing me saying it. They can't consider what you're saying tonight. And this, and the, the presentation that was just given, that's gonna be announced at the beginning, if there is ever a hearing here, as an ex parte communication. And these folks are legally obligated to only consider what they he- hear, not tonight. They're only allowed to consider what they hear that evening, if it comes back, when everybody's here to argue about it, and, but they know what everybody's, the other side's talking about. So I apologize, um, if, you know, you've come here tonight, you're expecting to say your piece, but my job is to protect the process, and that includes protecting your side of it as well as the other side of it. So I hope you all understand that.
Thank you. So we do have two more, um, two more speakers for that subject. Um, Leanne Charles, do you still wanna speak?
I've decided I won't since you guys won't take into consideration.
Okay.
You're here, but you will.
Just, yeah, okay.
Question, could the other side be here as well?
These, if, if it comes, if it comes back to this council, it'll be advertised. It'll be a formal hearing where everybody gets notice of it, and because that's not tonight. You don't, there, I don't, I, I would doubt there's anyone from Orlando Health here tonight. But even if they were, there's gonna be people that might not be here because this is not an advertised public hearing on, of this quasi-judicial matter. It's just the requirements that we have to comply with, just like Deland and Volusia County, every other local government in the state of Florida.
So how would we be notified? I'm just curious, 'cause in our neighborhood, like, seven people got notices out of eight houses.
I'm gonna defer to the Development Services Director. I, I don't know exactly what type of hearing this ultimately will be, whether it comes to this council, so I can't really address what kind of notice is gonna be given at this point in time. I apologize.
Hold on a minute.
Sure.
Joe, I'm gonna let him.
Folks, don't leave yet. Mr. Ruiz is going to speak to answer that question. Fair enough?
Yes, so the Planning Commission did table this application, uh, that went to the Planning Commission, so uh, once that is ready to be reheard by the Planning Commission, depending on the results of that hearing, if the Planning Commission were to deny the hearing, or the, deny the case, then it would come to you all on an appeal if the applicant, um, decided to, to appeal that.
But what kind of notice would be given?
Notice that would be given would be they'd get, receive mailers, um, to the adjacent residences as we've done. And then there would also be public notice signs that are placed out, um, on the site.
So how come only eight got mailers?
It is within a certain radius, uh, so that's likely why they received, only eight people received it.
And please understand, this is not discretionary. It's not like some ci- city of Orange City staff person says, we're gonna just notify Bob and Jane. This is, this is a, in our land development code, and it's required by the Florida statutes as far as the nature of notice that's provided.
And Kaylee, correct me if I'm wrong, do, I believe appeals go in the newspaper as well, correct?
Okay.
Correct, yes. So it would go, did they, um, continue until a specific date or an unknown date?
They did up until, uh, for next month.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, um, the advertisement, the legal advertisement would not be redone since they were continued to a specific date. Um, however, I believe that we would redo the mailers.
Absolutely.
We can definitely redo the legal ad if required. Um, and then we would all of our agenda packets.
Folks, if you have any questions, just contact either the city clerk's office or Development Services, and they'll know, all right?
And all, all agendas are published on our website, um, so you are able to go on there at any given time and view those. Um, that QR code that is on the door back there, you can scan that, and that will take you directly to the agenda portal for not only city council, but Planning Commission, code enforcement, any, any public meeting that we have, you would be able to find on there as well.
So this does not automatically come before the city commission. And it only would come here on an appellate basis, which is if somebody didn't like the final decision of the planning commission, they would need to file the appropriate legal notice to have it overturned and considered by this body.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and just, just for the record, um, Laurie Charles is not here either.
No, I'm glad you said that.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, um, none at this time. Number five ordinances, first reading, none at this time. Public hearing ordinances, second and final reading, none at this time. Um, seven A, resolution three seven three dash two five, Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mayor. This is a resolution of the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, amending the pay plan for the city of Orange City, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Dale Arrington?
Yes. So, um, right out of the gate, I wanna say that this does not have a budgetary impact on the city. This is really an administrative matter dealing with our pay classification schedule. As previously, um, discussed, and as you've heard, people are asking for new positions and new types of positions that we've never had before. And they have asked that we reconsider putting back in positions that we once eliminated. As you know, in next year's budget, I have a request to do a pay classification study. The first thing that they will need to take a look at is your pay classification schedule. And I wanna make sure that we have all the appropriate positions in that pay classification schedule so that I can include it with the scope of services that goes out for soliciting costs. Therefore, I'm asking to go ahead and amend it at this time so that we've got all, all of our current positions and all of our future positions that you might want to possibly consider funding included within the pay schedule. Those positions would be to create a new mechanic classification, a planning technician position being reclassified to executive assistant, a special event supervisor because that was important to you during your planning, a customer support classification, stormwater crew chief, a senior water treatment plant operator. Um, and I want to reestablish the, uh, police lieutenant classification. With this, I am also asking for two additional incentives that will have a very minor effect on the budget. And that is to allow our community service aide to receive, uh, up to a five percent, um, increase to pay upon appropriate classification or certification by the Florida Association of Code Enforcement Officers and the, uh, Florida Association of Animal Control Officers. So this is an administrative action.
Any comments from the council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation or a motion to recommend the staff recommends approval of implementation of changes to the general schedule, enterprise funds, certified fire sworn law enforcement pay plans with all modifications identified in resolution three seven three dash two four.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Anything from the public? See you in a moment. We'll bring it back to council for, um, Kaylee.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and resolution three seven three dash two five passes. Seven B, resolution number three seven four dash two five, Mr. Reichman?
Yes, Mayor, Council. This is a resolution of the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, adopting a ten-year stormwater capital projects list, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict therewith, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Uh, below?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, uh, city manager, uh, city attorney, uh, Bilal Fikar, Public Services Director. So this resolution in front of you is to adopt the ten-year stormwater master plan. This is the same list that, uh, was presented to you by David Hamstra of Pegasus Engineering. We had a, a stormwater work session, and then this list was pr- uh, presented to the council on May twenty-seventh. And I truly wanna thank, uh, the council and, and the mayor and city manager for your involvement in the whole process. So we took all the comments, uh, incorporated that in that list, and this list is the final project list that is in front of you. Once the council adopts the list of projects, then we can move forward with a rate strip. And that is the discussion on the next item. Uh, so at this time, we are asking the council to adopt resolution three seventy-four dash two five to establish the stormwater capital projects for the next ten years.
Any comments? Any comments, questions? I had a comment, I just wanted to say that, um, just to be transparent to the public, we all had a workshop and talked about all the stormwater issues in Orange City and tried to prioritize what needs to be fixed first, because there's so many, right, since Milton. And so I appreciate you all doing this work in your department and, and everybody that was involved. And, um, I think it's a good list, so, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll, um, bring it back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor, to accept Resolution three seven four dash two five, Stormwater Capital Project Ten Year List.
We got a motion and a second, anything from the public? Okay, bring it back to, uh, Kaylee.
Vice Mayor Grimm?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and Resolution number three seven four dash two five passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to discussions and action. Uh, eight A, Stormwater Non-Ad Valorem Rate Analysis Presentation by Raftalis.
Yes, I'm just going to introduce them, I'll just set up the, the thing. First of all, thank you for approving the projects list. Now that it's approved, we can move forward with the stormwater rate study. So now, uh, first of all, I just want to let you know that this presentation is just a presentation. No action is required tonight. It's to get your input, we will take that, and then come back, hopefully for the next meeting, with a final rate study. So I want to begin by assuring the council members and the residents that this study is extremely thoughtful and data-driven. We understand the impact that the rate increase can have on our residents, and that's why we have thoroughly evaluated every possible option to minimize the cost. So it's just a bare minimum increase that we need to complete the projects, meet the staffing needs, and meet any equipment that we need for the stormwater projects. So I, I think we have mentioned that in our last few meetings, that we, uh, need, we are pretty much maxed out on what we can do with the current funds that we are getting from the stormwater fees. We have an aging infrastructure, we have flooding issues, uh, there is some growth in the city. And then, of course, the storm events, uh, their frequency is increasing, and they are more severe. So we need to start looking at, um, coming up, uh, with some projects, looking at staffing needs. And with that, we are looking at the rate study for the next five years, what we should do, how much the increases should be. I have, uh, worked with Raftalis before, and the reason I like working with Raftalis is because they have a very conservative approach looking forward, and that is what we have done in this study. So with that, I'm going to ask, uh, Sean Ocasio with Raftalis to come and present the rate study.
There's something going on?
Is that, good?
What's going on?
If you swap out the presentation if possible, the version that was filed, um, like, printed off. So Johnson to try to pull up draft number four, the consultant just brought this to our attention, and we'll try to pull that up.
Okay, uh, there, I think there was an email sent, uh, with the latest, um...
Kaylee's off the hook.
Presentation, Kaylee, can you check? I apologize to the council, I, I don't know what's going on.
Who sent it to Rebecca?
Who sent it to Rebecca?
Uh, John.
Okay.
Can we move on to the next item and come back to it?
Uh, yes, we can.
That way it gives them time to find what...
I don't have a PowerPoint with this one, so it's no problem.
I should have it in a second. It's okay, they're going to go ahead and do those.
Okay. All right, we're going to...
So the next, go ahead.
Sorry, we're going to move, we're going to move on to eight B, Acceptance of Final Report, Orange City Strategic Plan Goals, Strategies, and Objectives. Dale Arrington?
Yes, so on May twenty, or, it's been a long night already. In May, at your first, uh, Saturday in May, uh, you all had a special workshop to, uh, redo and update your current strategic plan. And we, um, forwarded to you under separate cover all of the raw data for that and the tabulation sheets. So this is your final report that blends the new priority areas that you established along with your old priority areas that you retained. So you will find both of those in the budget, in the strategic plan. I really want to point out that the strategic plan itself is following this year's budget. And I want to thank our finance department for helping us with these graphics. I think they're really kind of neat.
Yeah.
But that's just an aside. Your high priority items for this year were to, um, have us...
Hold on one minute, can, do you, do you guys mind, do you guys mind going in there and doing that? Because I, I have a really time, hard time hearing when there's surround, sorry.
Uh, so get it.
Go ahead.
Your, um, top highest priority areas were to examine options for community event center, to look at additional options available to reduce or prevent flooding, which is one of the things they're working on right now. Uh, police officer staffing was an extremely high priority area for you. And then those were in the fourteen and sixteen point range. Then your additional priority areas were to hire an events coordinator. That would be a general fund position. Continue efforts to improve public communication and organizational transparency. Identify options to enhance project management process and reporting, and to conduct studies to examine organizational processes and time performance. So those are the, the big ticket items that got put into the item. And if you read through it, you'll see there are many, many more things that we're working on. We have already started or commenced working on a number of these items. They are not easy items to implement. They're ones that affect the city, citywide, and some of them will take years to accomplish. And in fact, you know, if you start looking at, fi, coming up with the idea of a community center and building it and occupying it, that's a ten-year effort, folks. Just, just putting it out there for you, and we already have on our plate police department, fire department, public works department. So we're not able to commence working on that right away. So I think if, uh, you know, what we're asking is that you go ahead and accept the final report and adopt the plan as presented to you, and we will continue to, um, hold this up in all of our actions and guide our, our work here at the city.
Any comments from the council? Y'all so talkative tonight. All right, I'm going to do it.
I, um, I have a question. Um, we're looking at places where we can find funds for the budget for next year. So hiring an events coordinator right now, is that something we can kind of put on the back burner until we can get through the budget for next year and figure out what has to be cut already?
So, um, well, we have provided for it in the pay plan that you have just adopted. We are, have already begun working on this. I do not see it coming into fruition next year based on the budgetary reasons that were presented to you earlier. But it doesn't hurt to plan it. My, you know, when you look at hiring an events coordinator, you're looking at the structure of city government and where that events coordinator should be. And I do not believe it is in the city manager's office. So we're already engaging in the discussions. I doubt that it will be ready for consideration this fiscal year, but you never know, and we present you always with options. So when you get to the point where we're giving you the general budget overview, we will come back with you, back to you. As you go through the, um, budget adoption process, things that we have whacked out of the budget, that people have requested, how much they cost, and what you would need to do to put them back in. It was my intent to provide you with an annualized salary on this. And then it's up to you if you want to stop something else we're doing and put that in. So, you know, that's, that's your decision to make. I think it, um, you know, and it, of course, all comes down to how quickly I can reorganize city government and get everybody on board to considering having this. But the decision should be made. I think once you have all of the information and all of the competing information, do you want to fund this position? Or would you rather have, um, one of the police officers that the police department asked for, or the customer service intervenor, I can't remember their title already, Devlin, that Devlin asked for? So you, you'll have a list of things you may consider funding. And of course, you will also have a li, a recommendation, which at this point, based on what I know, is that there will, will not be funding for a new, whole new sort of position.
So I want to re, I just want to remind the council that this is just to accept the final report. This report was put together from our workshop of strategic planning, which is awesome, by the way. I think everybody really did a good job with just putting everything in there. And I also wanted to put it out to the public that, you know, these are our top priorities right now. And it's the event center for the community. It's to prevent the flooding if we can, you know, which was major for us. And our police officer staffing, they need that. So these were our top priorities. But also, the events coordinator falls into the next one, which says, continues efforts to improve public communication and organizational transparency. So, and the reason that that was even brought up at the workshop was because our PIO is doing that job, and she can't give the public information if she's working on events, right? So I just want everybody to know why this even came to fruition on our list. But it is a wish list, right? We hope that we can have it all, but we probably can't. And, um, and like Dale said, you know, when it comes down to actually voting on what we're going to cut or what we're going to keep in the budget, that'll be at another time. So, um, just wanted to remind you all that. But I, I love this strategic plan. If y'all can go online and look at it, it's really good this year. It's, it's really community-based. I feel like our council has really taken it to another level with, you know, caring about the community and doing something that's for all, so I'm proud to say that. So with that being said, um, we would just need a motion.
Well, I'd just like to comment also that, um, that it, no, it's, that it is a strategy based on what you are working on for your plan and your, how you, um, establish the objectives that you, we are doing for our city, we are all doing for the city, but for your office, correct? And that's the strategy. And like you said, some are, some are short-term, some are very long-term, and some we may not even see in our...
Yeah, we do this every year, and it could, and it could change with a new council and new wishes and...
Right.
Right? And so there's some things that we accomplish and some things we never do.
Exactly.
Right.
It's just a guideline, it's just a...
And you have to add it into all of the things that are already...
In process.
In process.
In the queue.
That were long-range goals.
Right.
And it does not take into consideration any of your normal day-to-day work.
Right.
So...
And budget is down the, down the path when we get to that.
Anybody else, any other comments? Okay, we just need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept, we have something in here. Accept the final report for Orange City's strategic plan, goals, strategies, and objectives.
We have a motion, we have a second, anything from the public? Okay, we'll bring it back to Kaylee.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grimm?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes, and the motion passes. Okay, we're going to go back to eight A, to the stormwater. You ready, guys, you ready for that?
I think we should have the latest, uh, version of the presentation now, and I think I already said what I was going to say there.
So with that, I'm just going to ask Sean Ocasio with Raftalis to come and present the rate study.
Thank you. We just run the YouTube.
So now that we've built up sufficient anticipation, I'll try not to disappoint. For the record, uh, my name is Sean Ocasio, I'm a senior manager with Raftalis Financial Consultants. Uh, with me tonight is Henry Thomas, he's a senior vice president with Raftalis Financial Consultants, and we've been the project team, working with the city and, uh, team and Bilal on the stormwater rate study, um, analysis. So just a little bit of background on what that study and the analysis that we did entails. Uh, what we're doing is we're trying to develop a, a rate and financing plan for the stormwater system. So as a part of that analysis, it's very detailed and data-driven, as Bilal mentioned. We're looking at your customer, you know, your billing records, we're looking at your revenue projections, your historical revenues, we're looking at your budgeted operating costs, we're also looking at the capital improvement plan, which is a driving factor in, in the rates that we're going to be talking about this evening. Our forecast is, uh, specific to twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty, whereas the, the capital plan that Bilal mentioned just a moment ago is the ten-year projects. We're looking at the first five year in our analysis here. As a part of that, you know, we're looking at funding that capital plan through use of reserves, through use of grants, uh, additional borrowing assumption as well is built into the forecast as well. And the, the data that we started with, um, to base this analysis on is your, your twenty twenty-five adopted budget and your twenty twenty-six proposed operating budget for the department. So, uh, some of the things that we try to keep in mind as we develop the, the analysis, we have certain financial targets and considerations that we're trying to, uh, maintain. Some of that relates to, um, you know, long-term, we're trying to develop a plan that promotes long-term sustainability for the utility system. We're trying to make sure that the utility system maintains appropriate cash reserve balances to handle, you know, contingency events and things of that nature. Uh, we're also trying to make sure that you're in compliance with your loan agreements. Uh, currently, the department has, uh, loans outstanding with, uh, uh, SRF. And so in addition to making the annual, semi-annual payments on those loans, there's also certain, uh, margin requirements that you have to make as well, financial metrics, it's called, uh, debt service coverage. Um, so we're trying to make sure that we have adequate cash flow, we're trying to make sure that we're balancing coverage, and we're trying to make sure that we're balancing, uh, cash balances. And of course, as a part of that analysis, we're trying to make sure that, to the extent we can, that we're, we're minimizing and mitigating the, the rate impacts to, to the city's residents. Just a little bit of kind of definitional items here, you know, the, the city's, uh, stormwater fund operates as an enterprise fund. Uh, the short version of that is essentially that the, the enterprise fund has to operate like an enterprise or a business in so much as the revenues of the, the system have to be sufficient to cover the, the cost to operate the, the enterprise. Um, essentially, you have a bit of a balancing act, you're, you're balancing the revenues of the system, in this case, the assessment revenues, uh, against your, your operating costs, your debt payments, uh, your capital costs, and so on. Uh, jumping into, uh, some of the, the initial assumptions, uh, with respect to, uh, customer accounts and revenues, currently, the stormwater system provides, uh, service to about thirty-nine hundred parcels in the city as of fiscal year twenty twenty-five. That thirty-nine hundred parcels is a, breaks down into about fifty-eight thousand, a little over fifty-eight thousand equivalent billing units. That's the mechanism by which you bill for stormwater, it's on a billing unit basis. And, um, with that, uh, the growth rate that we're projecting based on planning data and some other items provided is about one point eight five percent per year, so just under two percent per year growth in terms of, uh, those EBUs and, and, and accounts. Uh, in terms of the revenues, uh, budgeted revenues for the department are projected just under a million dollars, about nine hundred and thirty thousand, increasing to about one point, a little... about $930,000, increasing to about 1 point, a little over $1 million by the end. Now, that's just the revenue at today's rates, accounting for that growth in accounts. That's not including the, the rate adjustments.
Mayor Marks, may I interject, please?
Yes, please. What is going on?
We were outside conferencing because there's bad weather on the way.
Okay.
We have received no official notifications about it, that there is a storm cell moving from south to north with high winds and the possibility of hail coming our way.
So what do you want to do?
Nothing.
Nothing? Hold on to your seats tight?
Yep, hold on. If we've received some official notifications or if you see Ronnie back there dumping up and down, you know, call on him. He'll tell us what to do.
We're just tempting fate because we're talking about stormwater, so it's inevitable.
Oh, I left my umbrella in the car.
So, but that's what was going on.
Okay, thank you. There was a little bit of commotion there and I was, it was very hard to, you know, sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Switching gears from, from growth and revenues, moving on to operating expenses. We based the projection of the department's operating cost based again on the 2025 and 2026 operating budgets. And the, the overall projected growth rate in those expenses over our forecast period, which is again 2025 through 2030, is about just under 9% per year, going from about $650,000 to about $1 million over that five-year window. The reason for that increase over time is, you know, you have your, your escalation in terms of labor costs, health insurance benefits, you know, repair and maintenance costs, you know, capital inflation, that kind of thing. The other big item that's a part of that also is this plan assumes that the addition of five full-time equivalent positions or FTEs throughout the course of the forecast window. Three projected for 2026 and two projected in 2027. So we have all those cost items being built into the, to the plan as we move forward in time. Probably the, the, the main driving item here is the, the capital improvement program. The total program, again, for the, the window that we're looking at through 2030 is about $9.9 million. That is in future dollars escalated by about 5% per year. Just a couple of, you know, highlights here. The, the four largest projects in that plan, which comprise a very significant percentage of the total. You have industrial drive drainage, utility roadway improvements projects, Silverstone Court, North Thorpe Avenue and South Park Avenue. And the respective amounts there, 3.3 million, 1.4, about a million, and just under a million for those. Those right there are, you know, some of the bigger ticket items in the, the capital plan. In terms of the capital plan spending curve over time, this graphic here shows it's, you know, I'll be honest, it's a little lumpy. But essentially, that's the spending curve of that $9.9 million. About 1.9 million forecasted for this year, about 4.2 in 2026. And, you know, about half a million, a little under that, and 27, 28, then up to 1.3 and about 1.7 million by the end. The, the colors on screen just indicate the, the funding source that's projected to fund those particular projects. The, the dark, it almost appears as black on screen, but it's a very dark green. That's projects funded from rate revenues. You also have some grants coming in in the first year. That's the, the pink that you'll see. Yellow is use of an existing SRF loan that you've just secured. And then on the tail end, that light greenish color, that's proposed additional SRF loan to fund some projects on the tail end there. So one thing I did want to mention here. So, so with that, you have, you know, your, your operating costs that are increasing. Again, you know, additional staffing, inflation, those sorts of things. You have your, your capital plan that you're trying to fund for the next five years. Another item that you also have is you have an existing SRF loan that you're paying on as well. That's about $145,000 a year in annual payments. So you have that. And then built into this plan, you also have the, the use of a, of a loan that's going to have, you know, its associated payment come on in the future. I believe in fiscal year 2028, there'll be a bump up in the payments there. So you have those various items impacting your, your cost structure for the, the utility system. So with that, shifting gears to the, the rate adjustments that we're looking at. It's just, you know, this guy's being supportive of the stormwater cause. So your, your existing annual rate per equivalent billing, or excuse me, benefit unit currently is $17.06. That increase on a pure EBU basis, it would go to $23 for 2026, up to 27, 27.75, 28.50, and 29.75. An increase of just under $6 for 2026, about $4 for 2027. And then 70, about 75 cents per EBU in the subsequent years of the forecast period. In terms of that impact to your, your average residential property, your average parcel, the average parcel is about four equivalent billing units worth. So if we just take those per EBU rates, scale them by four, that's the total annual bill for stormwater that, that we're seeing. So currently, it's about $68.24 for an average property of four benefit units. And that would increase to $92. And subsequently to 108, 111, 114, and 117. In terms of the, the increase for the, the first year, it's about just under $24 for the year. So in terms of overall comparability, we did a, a small sampling of some other municipalities and their stormwater rates and trying to keep them on an equivalent basis for a residential property. And that's what you'll see on the graphic here, the, the average fee, and it's on an annual basis. And what you'll see on the graphic here is that the average, based on the survey we did, is about just under $132 per year. And as you can see, the, the, the green on the far left-hand side is your existing rate. That's the $68.24. And the green that's moving a little bit more to the middle of the pack, that's the $92 or the, the 2026 rate. One thing I, I would note here as well is even if we, we go, if I go back a slide, that maximum rate, the 117, would still have you below the average of the pack. And that's the rate that we're looking at five years from now compared to the rates of everyone else here today. Another thing I'll mention is I, I know a couple of these communities are currently doing rate studies as well for their stormwater departments. I know the city of Edgewater does it on an annual basis. Mount Doris currently just kicked one off. Sanford's working on one. So, so your relative position will likely be somewhat preserved as the other ones move as well over time.
We're still lower, though.
Yes, ma'am.
We're the lowest.
This graphic here, it's a little busy. Essentially, it's just a, a representation. The bars are the, the outflows, so your operating costs, the payments on your debt. And then the, the light blue at the very top, that's your, the, the capital being funded from your rates. So what you'll notice is in, in 2025, clearly there's a deficiency. The, the black dotted line is, would be your revenues at existing rates plus the, the growth that's assumed. Whereas the red dotted line is the revenues at the proposed rates that we just showed on the, on the prior slide. So what you'll see there, what I wanted to, to make note of is the first two years, the, the rates, even at the proposed levels, aren't quite sufficient to cover the capital needs. So there is a use of some of your existing cash to, to buttress some of that. But then as we hit 2027 and beyond, we're, you know, breaking even and then starting to replenish a little bit of that reserve. And you'll see that on the next graphic here, where you'll see the dip going into 25, 26, leveling out at 27, and then building back up in 28, 29, and 30. In terms of the, the targets we're looking at, the, the yellow dotted line and the, and the light blue dotted line, the yellow one is 90 days of operating expenses, which I believe is the city's policy for the fund to maintain that in reserve. So we're trying to make sure that we always have that level on hand. But then we're also aiming just a little bit higher at 90 days of, and it's cut off a little bit by the image there, 90 days of rate revenues, just to, to have a little bit more flex room. You know, at, at its highest, it's not, it's not quite 600,000 by the end in the fund. This one here, so that margin that I, I mentioned a moment ago when it comes to your SRF debt that you have to make, essentially, it's, it's a measurement of the, the revenues of your system minus the operating costs. That, that net number, how it compares to your total annual debt payment. So it's just a margin. So the, the, the margin that your loan agreements state that you have to meet is 115%. So whatever that ratio is, it has to be 115. And what you can see is clearly it's, it's very healthy in the front years. Again, it's the, the, the front-end loaded rate increases. And then it starts to dip down. And the reason for that is you have those loan payments that I mentioned earlier coming online from the, the capital projects that are being funded as a part of the plan. So it's, it's still dropping back down to close in line to what it was presently. But that's the, the reason for kind of the spike that you see there. Terms of conclusions, so, you know, based on, on our, our projections again, you know, we, we looked at your, your operating budget in detail. We looked at your revenues in detail. We looked at your capital costs and your debt and everything. And there, the, the revenues of the system are projected to be insufficient to cover the projected operating costs and revenue requirements of the, the system during the forecast period that we're evaluating. So under the proposed rates that we, we mentioned just a moment ago, those goals that we mentioned on the front in the presentation, we're, we're meeting. You know, we're trying to build adequate cash balance in the system for, you know, contingency events. We're trying to build to a, a break-even cash flow and, and, and build the reserves. And we're also trying to make sure that you're in compliance with your loan agreements and those covenants on coverage and, and those other items. As, as Bilal mentioned, it's not an action item right now. We're just presenting, but our, our recommendation with this iteration of the plan would be to, you know, to, to adopt those increases in, in a future meeting. And the, the other item I would mention is we also would recommend that you, you know, you look at this plan, you know, ongoing basis, whether in the next three to five years, just to make sure, you know, that the costs are, are going as projected, revenues are growing as projected. Maybe you had some project costs fall out, maybe you had some project costs spike. So you want to try to keep this a bit of a living plan. And three to five years is a good window to, to do that. So with that, if there's any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Yep.
Comments?
Very well put together.
Thank you. Appreciate it. When's the last time we did a rate study for this?
So the last time stormwater rates study was done, that was 2016.
16.
And, yeah, that was just a.
That's all I wanted to know. I just let everybody know, you know? Things are going up, but it's been a while, so. Okay, thank you. If anybody wants to go before this really hits in the audience, we're just hitting on to, let's see, we got one more thing.
So are you satisfied with the direction that has been portrayed here? So that we can go ahead and prepare and finalize the rate study to be put on your next agenda?
Well.
I think that's the question. Do you have any changes you need to make to it?
I mean, it, none of us want to raise it, but we don't really have a choice. So I think y'all did a good job putting it together. What do y'all think?
I think it was an excellent job.
Yeah. So it, it's preparing us for future storms and things like that and also helps us with our current situation, so.
So it's our intent to have this for final adoption on your next agenda. And I'm hoping that in the, yes.
Adoption of the report.
Adoption of the report. Right, and it comes back to you two more times in your budget for your NAVA assessment. But in order to even get there, we have to have the report adopted.
Yes.
And I'm hoping the report, just in case we get waylaid, you know, five years from now and don't do another, can conclude with a three, with a, an annual adjustment at the end of the five-year period equal to COLA and perhaps 1% in case we are not timely in our next adoption. So just a suggestion, so.
Makes sense.
So when they come back with the report, it's pretty much going to be the same thing, only what you just said? Add it on?
Maybe what I said added on.
Okay.
Up to them. Their machinery for doing these rates is amazing. And Sean is quite a wizard at manipulating it, so.
Could I add one, one comment on your final request? So the, the key to that, five years out, based on inflation plus one, is I think you have to keep in mind as an assessment, it has to bear a relationship to the actual costs. So indexes are a nice tool, but we have to make sure it produces a reasonable result that your costs justify. And that's why we said particularly your capital costs for your projects could be significantly different than the plan today. So we think you should revisit the study in its entirety sometime before that next five years anyway.
I think so too, because we're doing so many drainage basin studies. But I think that was the intent when we adopted this 10 years ago.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm just trying to cover our bases a little.
So maybe in a couple of years, we'll look at it again, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm hoping we don't need it.
Yeah, right. Okay, moving on to 8C. Approved change order number four to contract P230-24 Gateway and, and we finding signage for Orange City and adopt budget amendment resolution number 372-25. Dale Arrington.
He's going to read the resolution to you?
Yes, I'm going to go and get that, get that done.
Thank you.
This is resolution number 37225. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Orange City, Florida, amending the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2425 by adjusting revenue and expenses, repealing all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith for severability and providing for an effective date.
So this is my item. I'm requesting this amendment because I need more money to finish up our gateway signs project and illuminate all the signs. And they will be beautiful. You will love them. But it's just costing more than we thought it would. I think we have done a good job negotiating. The reason why this is on the discussion and action agenda is because I did overspend my original contingency fund by $14,000. I do apologize for that. I've spelled it all out in this agenda item.
We'll just take it out of your paycheck.
Yeah, thanks. You know, so I'm very sorry I did that. Mistakes happen. We caught it right away and thus it's here in front of you.
You're human.
Almost right away. So there it is. I, I need more money to finish this project up. Please approve the resolution.
Any discussion from the council?
No, these things happen. I mean, you get, you have to do what you have to do as a city manager. Otherwise, if you just stop your progress, you're going to end up costing the city more money if you don't.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And sometimes I do things on purpose. This one, you know, because, and I will tell you about that under city managers' report. But, you know, this one was an accident. We, we are looking at our systems and building in a, you know, the redundancy that we took out, so.
Anything further?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we just need action from the council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number four to Kinko's sides and awnings in the amount of $30,047.15 and authorize the city manager to execute the change order and any subsequent change orders not to exceed a revised contingency amount of 5% or $23,346 and adopt budget amendment resolution number 372-25.
Okay, we got a motion. We got a second. Anything from the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to Kaylee.
Councilmember Darmes?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grimm?
Yes.
Councilmember Stafford?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes. Resolution 372-25 passes. Okay, report, city manager?
Yes, ma'am. I have four things I want to report on. First is that this coming Thursday at 6:00 PM, we have our, first of our coffee with the council members kicking off here in the, these chambers with council member Dana Knight. Looking forward to doing this again. Second, and I think it's. We have issued and have live on our website our Orange City's 2025 hurricane preparedness guide. We are trying to figure out a way we can disseminate this on social media, but it may be just a direction of where you need to go and pull it down because it is fairly lengthy. Thank you. I, I'd like everyone to have a hard copy. We've got printed copies available in our lobby. They go in our utility handouts. And anyone can print one off the web or take a look at it. The third item I wanted to make you aware of is as you will recollect, we applied for a community development block grant to, it was a, a kind of a hurried preparation. And there was a requirement in that, that we be shovel-ready come October 1 for our project. We requested $380, $368,000 in community, local community development block grant funds being funneled through the county to build the, or to pave the dirt parking lot that is adjacent to the city hall annex. During their committee meetings, I want to say they called up and indicated that they'd like to fund us, but we, they only had $293,000. Could we get it done with that? And of course, we said, sure. So I'm, I want to let you know that we're looking for you and we'll come back to you with. And we'll come back to you with a more formal budget process for next year's budget to include this in there. And that will be in our CRA budget, so it does not impact the general fund because it's a, you know, an eligible request. But I, in order to be shovel-ready, I need to go ahead and let the task for designing this to an engineering firm. And we have, we will do that. So just kind of advising you of some projects that I think were in your intent and good news that we have been awarded, you know, 75% of what we asked for. It really is. Thank you very much, Devlin and Becky, for, Joe, for, you know, getting it all together in short order. And lastly, I am going on vacation. I know, I'm so excited. I didn't take a vacation last year, so I'm really excited. I will be leaving on Saturday, June 14. I will be returning to work on Wednesday, June 25. Christine will be in charge while I'm gone. I will furnish you with a memo with all of her phone numbers, and I know she will be happy to help you in any way, so.
Where are you going, Daytona Beach?
No, I'm, I'm going hiking and visit my baby boy in Washington State. So, yeah.
Enjoy.
Cell phone service may not be where I am.
Oh, darn.
That's a good thing. That's a real vacation.
Yes, absolutely. It will be high, high of 70 and low of 58.
Nice, oh, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful.
Well, let's hope no hurricanes come while you're gone. Anything else?
No, ma'am, that's it.
City clerk?
I have no report. Welcome back to chambers, though.
City attorney?
I just wanted to give kudos to your city manager. I was looking at the news this afternoon, and there was an article about an announcement today in Washington, given the storm and everything, that after this year's hurricane season, FEMA is going to be wound down as an organization. And any disaster funds will go to the states and will be significantly less and will be distributed directly from the White House. So, to the states. So, you know, it's something that I, when we go through our budget process...
And then it'll probably get allocated out by how big your city is, you know, like the counties did, right?
We'll see.
Yeah.
We just don't know. But I, I just thought, I mean, this is really going to be, budgeting for local governments, including unlimited Orange City, is really going to take a lot of guesswork going forward.
We're going to need a new workshop for Budget 101 now.
We are, and some of those changes are already going into effect this hurricane season. Where the amounts of money that we will be able to collect on certain categories of funding have been reduced. As you will recollect, almost all of our, 95% of our hurricane debris pickup has been a reimbursable expense, no longer. It's down to 87.5%. And the ability to even be declared an emergency has gotten greater. So they're no longer going to declare, you have to meet a higher percentage of damage in order to be declared a demerency to be eligible for your FEMA funds. And, you know, you just look at what's going on in the country and the number of disasters that are happening everywhere, I'm sure is one of the driving forces of this.
That's it, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to end it on a, on a positive note.
Thanks. Okay, any new business?
Madam Mayor, yes, over at the county today, I found out that they have funds that they have to get rid of before the end of July for senior citizens, people over the age of 60 that need assistance with utilities.
Nice.
And also, they also have it for everyone, but this doesn't end in, in July. It continues on, and I would like to give it to our city manager and actually put it on our social media so our residents can find out what they're eligible for.
Awesome. Everybody agreeing, does everybody agree with that? Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to say that I attended, and along with Ms. Lisa Richardson, the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials. It was really good.
Wait, is that new business, though?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're under new business. Save that for just a hot minute, okay? Okay. We're going to move on to approval amendments. We already did that. Okay, go ahead, Dawn.
Thanks. So anyway, yes, it was, it was really great training. Highly recommend. It was a very eye-opening, there was a lot of good information. There was a lot of fast information, but it was definitely presented by the Florida League of Cities in a wonderful way. I, I can't say enough about it, I enjoyed it thoroughly. And they did a good job of keeping us engaged and giving us the information that we need from a legal standpoint, from, you know, a service standpoint, and how we, what we need to do to govern ourselves and each other in order to serve our public. So it was really good, and I'm, I'm really glad to have the opportunity to go. And I would love to go to the second one whenever it comes up. So that's more about budgets, so as we're speaking about budgets, that's kind of a good thing.
Okay. Did you want to say anything? Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I pretty much summed it up.
Okay.
We had a good time, a great experience.
Yeah, was Mr. Payne still the person that put the presentation on? He's an attorney, he's pretty good.
There was two attorneys there that, yes, they were really good, they were great. They were very entertaining. They were very entertaining.
Anybody else have any comments, Fran?
I'd like to commend Dale and Attorney Bill on the recent awards that they won a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, yes, I didn't expect that.
Dale?
Thank you.
I, I seem to recall that we did win one, I know he did.
He did, he did.
So I was like, huh?
Me and his acceptance speech.
And over here, this one.
Almost made me cry. So, you know, that was very, very nice.
So Devlin won also.
Devlin won.
That's right.
Sorry, I missed it.
That's good. Anybody else? Okay. So I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I was, I was supposed to say this in the beginning and it, we just kind of got started. But this is our new chambers, but it's not completely done yet. I was told to let you all know that there'll be more things added. But I want to thank city clerk and whoever else was involved, assistant city manager, I saw in here putting everything together really quick so that we could have the meeting here tonight, because it's nice to be home, right? So, and I think it looks wonderful in here. Whoever picked out all the stuff.
May I say something? Christine has done a yeoman's job of watchdogging our contractors and making sure that everything moved slowly. You wouldn't believe the number of disasters she has headed off.
Well, thank, thank you.
I've been here every day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So...
It just, it feels good to be back in here, so.
Agreed.
The other thing is, is I wanted to just give Maddie a shout-out on public record. Our PIO has started to do videos that the council had asked her to do. I don't know if everybody saw them up here, but they're pretty, I think they're pretty fabulous. And it's really just to give the community some information about what's going on, you know, in the city, or what happened at our council meetings or different things to keep you up to par on what's happening in Orange City. And that's, I know that's one of our council's initiatives is to do that, so I want to thank her for that. And then myself and Dale and Development Services will be at John Knox tomorrow to talk to the residents there about development. And so we're really just trying to get out in the community and let everybody know what we're doing here and, you know, try to get the citizens engaged in their own city. So it should be interesting, there'd be, there's going to probably be about, what, 150 people, I think she said, or he said? So we'll see, we'll see how that works out, and we'll, we'll fill in at the next meeting what they say. With that being said, we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
None opposed, motion pass. Thank you, everybody.